I'd like to call the work session to order, please. At this time, we have item number two, Jack Fisher Park update. Bryson Morrow, recreational facilities manager, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and let it rip.
Bryson Morrow, twenty-five thirty-six Long Shot Cove. Keeneland Trace. Keeneland Trace. So, good afternoon, Mayor's Commissioner. My name is Bryson Morrow. I'm the facility manager at Jack C Fisher Park, home of Kentucky Legend Fields. A little bit about me, I've been with the Parks and Recreation Department since May of two thousand twenty-one. I was born and raised here in Owensboro, Kentucky. I played baseball for one year at Western Kentucky University before focusing on my career path. Today, I'm going to be giving you all an update on the renovations that have occurred at the complex. First, I want to begin with acknowledging who put the time and the labor. The most was done by these groups. Land Development, Land Design and Development was key contributors when it came to engineering and architectural design. Veskeel Sports Fields were tasked with field renovations and irrigation improvement. Veskeel Sports Fields has done many projects around the state, most notably their work with University of Kentucky on many projects. Here's a brief index of the renovation priorities that I will be covering today in the presentation. I will note that there had not been any significant renovations to the park since the park was established in nineteen eighty-six. Here's our, three of our four hybrid synthetic turf fields. These field renovations gave us the opportunity to rebrand our facility and remain competitive in the growing market. With these field renovations, we are able to have versatile play. We can accommodate T-ball through collegiate softball for girls, up to twelve-year-old baseball for boys, and we can also complement adult softball leagues. With the turf renovations came a new rainbird irrigation system that was installed. Between the field renovations and the irrigation systems, they have decreased the amount of game cancellations that was affecting our reputation. Next, this is a comparison picture that consists of the improved ticketing entrance. This is one of the two entrances to the softball complex, the other being the service entrance that is utilized for quick entry. There was a motor added to that gate. This ticketing entrance provides patrons with better customer service. It limits gathering outside of the park entrance, and it is more welcoming to visitors. The biggest difference between the old and the new is that the new is easier to locate, and it helps patrons differentiate between entry and exit points. Our parking lot was in need of increased spaces and the ability to improve pedestrian safety. We added one hundred and ninety parking spaces to be able to accommodate larger travel tournaments. With there not being in any surrounding areas around the park to park, it was important not to create bad experiences once visitors were at our facilities. With more parking spaces comes more vehicles and more traffic in the parking lot. So, these walkways provide visitors with the ability to move safely throughout the lot from the entrance all the way to the furthest parking spaces. Two amenities that were added outside of the complex were the batting cages and the playground. These amenities are outside of the complex so that they can be utilized by the general public as well as program and tournament attendees. These batting cages are the, one of the few accessible for free in our community. These cages are used by many local high school teams, a lot of college teams, and a lot of travel teams and players that have noted that when they travel around the state, there are not many batting cages that are available to them as a warm-up area. While the field draws, about the playground, the park playground was a nice addition as well. It gets a lot of use throughout the year. It's very open to the public, and it gets used as programming's going on or while we are closed after hours. There had not been a playground in the grounds at Fisher Park since the early two thousands. Here are some amenities that are around the park and inside the complex. These place making features draw attractions that have created meeting points and team photo locations, as you can see. Additional amenities that were added but not included or pictured. We added twenty by forty shade structures between three of our fields with a total of twenty-nine seating areas for visitors to stick around and socialize and eat. The shade structures encourage people to stick around and eat, which is really important because one of the ways that we generate revenue at our facility is through concessions. While the, while the field draws the attention of the players, the amenities draw the attention of the visitors and the fans as we got many compliments about the amenities throughout the year. Our most recent project that is finishing up is the maintenance building. As you can see, the new maintenance building provides twice, if not three times more space and work area and places for storage. The new maintenance building will consist of work areas and storage, but also inside, there is a bathroom, there is a staff break area, and there is an office. Previously, the only staff break area that was available to our staff was in the fieldhouse, which is where umpires and tournament directors are stationed during our events. So, this provides them a new space to take their breaks, which ultimately improves staff morale. Here you can see a list of what programs we offer and how we're servicing local taxpayers by providing recreational opportunities that enhance community involvement and increase the quality of life. With the field renovations, we're able to accommodate play beginning in the third week of February through the middle of November, and that has added five weeks of programming and events to our schedule. Kentucky Legend Fields are the host of many travel tournaments through the season. While local programs are throughout the week, the complex hosts tournaments almost every weekend of the season. A large percentage of teams from outside of Owensboro are the ones that create our economic impact by traveling to Owensboro on the weekends to spend money inside of Owensboro after earning dollars outside of Owensboro. Tourists spending money in our community on hotels, restaurants, shopping, that boosts our local economy. We believe that the money put into renovations was well-spent to remain in competitive market as many communities are building complexes and installing synthetic turf fields around the area. The support we have received for these renovations has been appreciated, and I will illustrate the effect of that support in our tournament season comparisons. So, this is a comparison of our two thousand eighteen tournament statistics prior to renovations to statistics after our first season with renovations. We increased the number of weekends that our park was able to play while hosting more tournaments with less weather cancellations. And we increased the number of tournament organizations that rented our facility. We saw a drastic increase in the amount of tournament inquiries from directors and organizations, so much so that we executed the implementation of a rental request form to classify rental proposals as bids. These rental request forms, with these rental request forms, we're able to analyze initial tournament data from the request form, weigh the feasibility of that tournament returning for the next season, but also giving new opportunities to new organizations to host events at our facility. As we completed the second year of rental request forms, we are now working with nine organizations, adding two new organizations for the two thousand twenty-two season. Tournament scheduled from twenty-one to twenty-two has increased from thirty-two hosted events to thirty-five number of tournaments scheduled to be hosted. Because of our field renovations, we were able to consider hosting tournaments in months that typically isn't considered within our season. In conclusion, one renovation priority that is significant but was not mentioned, that this project will come in under budget. We project that after some outstanding purchases, this project will come one hundred and ten to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under budget. The initial project was spread out between three fiscal years from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, and the initial project budget, original project budget for this was two point nine five million dollars. So, the value of the renovation is that it creates more recreational opportunities. It services local taxpayers with a quality of life initiative, and it drives new dollars to our economy. The renovations have helped provide the community with sustainable recreational leagues while also allowing for outside communities and organizations to host tournaments that create a local economic asset in our park. That is all I have for you today.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm not trying to blindside you at all. What if we had another like venue like Fisher Park in our community? The, if I'm looking at this number, you have like twenty-eight, thirty teams at a time at a tournament. Is that correct?
It is correct. A lot of times, we, we work really closely with the county parks to utilize Panther Creek Park. So, they are really a big help in our overflow of tournaments. So, those numbers are just for teams that play at Fisher. So, per se, we could have fifty teams in a tournament where twenty-four are at Fisher, but the remaining teams will roll over to Panther Creek Park and play their games.
Okay, let's see. What's missing out there that would make you better?
We could use some more batting cages, that's for sure. Those have been a really big hit. And we have four right now, and they get utilized year-round. But off the top of my head, that's, that's one of the major things I could think of, but I could ask Amanda. I think she might know.
You're not getting out on that ledge by yourself?
No.
Okay, well, I'm just curious. You know, it would be great if we had two parks like this, you know, maybe someday the county will possibly upgrade theirs like that, because I wouldn't want to draw this short straw. So, I would say your finals are probably played at Fisher then.
Correct, yes, most of them.
And, okay, I got you. You got a question?
Yes.
All right, Bryson says he's got the answer.
Okay, well, we'll see. I was just curious as, to the maintenance on the new fields, you know, with the AstroTurf, has that helped you considerably? Has the maintenance been, you know, easier to do? Or what's your opinion on those overall?
Overall, I'd say there's probably a little bit more work that has to be put into it. As, it does hold up a lot better with the weather, but to keep it and prolong the longevity of the, the actual turf, we do have to put additional hours into it that you might not think of, whereas you would be putting, let's say dirt on a dirt field, there's more technicalities when it comes to turf. So, we have to be really careful not to tear it up because it is, it's, it could be easily destroyed, and so that we have to put the extra hours in to make sure that it's not. But a lot of people do think that it's easier to take care of dirt fields, but from experience and seeing it, it's, it's probably more upkeep to take care of the turf. But it does last longer.
Looks nice, too.
Yes.
Hey Bryson, it's been a while since my kids have Sorry, excuse me. It's been a while since my kids have played out there. Who, who's bringing in the biggest tournaments? Is it BPA, USAA, and, and who's bringing in the tournaments? Are we still bringing in the tournaments that are so large that I remember at one time people were having to stay in Evansville? Are we still doing those type things?
I believe that we're trying to. We've made some, some new partnerships over the years, and some have disintegrated as well. But I think with, with these renovations, that there's no way that it can't grow into what it used to be. But we are, I would say the biggest tournaments that we have consist of U triple S A tournaments and NSA.
Trip, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One item in the upgrades, and it looks spectacular. I'm driven by it, and driven into it, and looked at it. It's awesome. But one question I had is, because it's an expensive investment, did we or do we have, maybe we did pre-renovation, a camera system up? And the two benefits I'm focusing on are, one, of course, it's isolated out there when you don't have an event.
Correct.
So, damage to your facility. But the second is, when you've got umpires calling games, all those different levels, if there's an incident, having a camera recording what the fan has done or the official's done or what happened might be helpful in trying to deal with that, because as you know, our commission occasionally has to arbitrate someone who's suspended from the parks for misbehavior. So, that was my question. Do you have any, did you ever, did we include cameras in this renovation?
I think they're, they're already established. We do have three, three hundred and sixty-degree cameras on top of the fieldhouse, two of them. They both shoot down the service entrance, or the service entrance and the ticketing entrance walkways. And then there's two being added to the new maintenance building as well, so.
So, if you had vandalism, you might, would they be on? They probably wouldn't be on if you're closed, right?
No, they're on all the time.
All the time, okay, all right. And then the only other question I've got, having been out there many times when my kids were younger, kind of like Jeff, is it's a, it's a hot environment, you know, particularly in the heat of the summer.
Yeah.
Do you still have fans and things like that? I know they had put a spray unit out there to kind of alleviate. In the renovations, did we do anything to kind of cool it off a little bit?
Yeah, we did. We added fans to the dugouts for players, and we added, yeah. We also added fans underneath the concession, concession stand, fieldhouse as well.
I was thinking about the announcers block upstairs. I've been up there and kept book.
Yeah, there's, there's air conditioning units upstairs in the fieldhouse press boxes as well.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the good work, Bryson and Amanda. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Assistant City Manager Leland Hancock, how much did we spend on those batting cages?
I'd have to defer to Amanda on those particular amounts, yeah. I want to think they were like seventy thousand, somewhere in that range. She's got all the details on that.
Look at Bryson drop. I'm out of here.
Mayor, I'd have to go back and pull the breakdown.
I know, that's a bad question.
And tell you for sure exactly what they were, but the engineered estimate cost of that unit and the labor rolled together, my estimation from where we started is probably about a hundred and ten thousand for those four. That would include the steel structure frame, the AstroTurf, all the netting and the concrete pad and the install of all those things. We also, sorry, Mayor, but I will mention that we are adding lights. To that, we're pulling into that omni light pole, and we're going to put some flood-style lights onto that unit because if you come at a time that the complex is not operating, then you have no lights to utilize that cage. So, we are adding those as part of this maintenance building project.
Well, I was just trying to do the math. If you came in under budget by whatever it was, I'm just thinking maybe we have enough left in that spot to stick some more cages out there.
I like the way you think, Mayor.
I got a question.
Okay, well, the city manager said it was a good idea. I'm golden the rest of the day.
I got a question. Amanda, do we have the room where they're, they're existing now that we could add to it at that location?
Add fields or batting cages?
You know, the new ones we just put in, the batting cages, can we expand?
Not in that exact specific spot is a room for more, but we do have an area that we call the fifth field. And we've struggled back and forth with maintaining that location for a practice warm-up area, but what we're seeing is most teams are not going out there and utilizing a full infield for warm-up and for practice. So, I do think we could maintain some area out there for warm-up and add some additional batting cages at that spot.
Thank you.
You had a shot at it. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know I have a couple of friends. Their kids
Two?
Yes. And anyway, one's in Bowling Green and the other's in Madisonville, and they came to Owensboro for some tournaments. And I met them over at the fields, and they just went on and on about how nice our park is over there, the whole facility. And my buddy in Bowling Green, he actually signed his daughter up with a team here in Owensboro because of the quality of the fields and the coaches also. You know, way to go.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Owensboro Police Department Annual Report. The chief.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners?
Morning.
Good morning. Today, we're going to talk about crime in Owensboro, and we're going to use some comparisons from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two stats. Of course, Part One Crimes, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty. I'll briefly touch on those because I'll have a slide that shows the comparison side by side, how we are impacted by crime. There's the two thousand eighteen Part One Crimes, and Part One Crimes are felony crimes, violent crimes against persons. So, you have burglary, theft, vehicle theft, arson, all of which are felonies. In two thousand eighteen, you can see there that we had two hundred and sixteen violent crimes, and total property crimes on the other side is two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. Two thousand nineteen, the big number that sticks out there to me is the murder that we had, six in two thousand nineteen. Total violent crimes, a hundred and eighty. Property crimes, two thousand four hundred and sixty-nine. Two thousand twenty, six murders again. Total violent crimes, a hundred and eighty-eight. Property crimes, two thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. Sorry. Two thousand, okay. Two thousand twenty-one, which was last year. That's the most recent completed year that we have. I'll also show some data from month to month, January first through January, I'm sorry, December, yeah, January first through January thirty-first. Comparisons for the month of January on all those same years as well. Two thousand twenty-one, if you notice, we only had one homicide, a hundred and eighty-three violent crimes total. Property crimes, two thousand ninety-seven. If you can tell, and you'll be able to see on some upcoming slides, that crime was trending downward.
A little closer to it.
Get a little closer, sorry.
Please.
Okay.
Sir.
All right. And here's your comparison, two thousand twenty-two, January only. In two thousand twenty-two, here we have one homicide that just occurred on East Twenty-Fifth Street in which a gentleman shot his fiancee and shot, then shot her granddaughter and turned the gun on himself. So, unfortunate. As a police chief or police officers in general, we prefer all those numbers to be zero. But as you know, a lot of things are outside of our control. So, to date in January, January, the month of January, we had sixteen violent crimes reported, property crimes at a hundred and seventy-four. Here's the chart from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one, and these are full years that would have been reported on our annual reports, all but two thousand twenty-one, which we're working on now to get into you all. Murders in two thousand eighteen, the comparison, three. Two thousand nineteen, six. Two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-one is one. Rapes dropped from two thousand twenty, from forty-one to thirty-five. Robberies dropped from forty-eight to thirty-two. Aggravated assaults increased from ninety-three to one hundred and fifteen, which is reflective and kind of similar to what happened in two thousand eighteen. As you all know, it's no secret that we've had a lot of gun violence in our community. If somebody is shot with a gun, that is a violent crime. That is a aggravated assault if that person does not die. So, we are trending up, and that is not a good stat for us. Total violent crimes reported have decreased. You started in two thousand eighteen, two hundred and sixteen. Two thousand nineteen, a hundred and eighty. Slight bump in two thousand twenty, a hundred and eighty-eight. And in two thousand twenty-one, we had a hundred and eighty-three violent crimes. There's the violent crime comparison from, using data from two thousand eighteen through twenty-one compared to data in two thousand twenty-two on the average in January there. Right now, we are matching that. One, and you ask, how could we average one murder when we had several? And this is in January. If you all remember back in two thousand nineteen, sorry, in two thousand nineteen, we had the triple homicide over on Audubon Avenue. And, but the other years, there were zero shooting, murders, homicides that occurred in the month of January. So, we are on par with over the last four years. Rapes, we are down. Net three, which represents seventy-five percent decrease. Robberies, we are up fifty percent. We had two averaged over the course of those four years, or three years, and, and we had one additional robbery this year so far. Aggravated assaults were up one, and total violent crime, we are down a net one, which is five point eight eight percent. Two thousand eighteen, Part One comparison, January only. There's what I was talking about earlier. We had three homicides in two thousand nineteen, and that was the one over on Audubon Avenue where Arne Bane shot three individuals to death. where Arne Bane shot three individuals to death and shot her fourth, but she survived. Two thousand twenty-two, again, East Twenty-Fifth Street that occurred a couple of weeks ago. Rapes, by comparison, we're at one versus four in two thousand twenty-one, same time period. So if you look at the totals down below, we're at a hundred and ninety for January of two thousand twenty-two versus, you know, those numbers, two hundred and six, two hundred and fourteen, two thirty-five, two oh two, respectively, from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one. Shootings and firearm discharges from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one. You'll see that, I'll just go straight to the totals there. Totals, eighty-four for two thousand twenty-one, which is an significant increase from previous years. Of that, we had sixteen either vehicles damaged with gunfire. Nineteen residences were damaged by gunfire. Seventeen victims, two deaths. And I'll clarify that in a second. Four were suicides in two thousand twenty-one via firearm. The death in two thousand twenty-one, when I say we only had one homicide, that may confuse you because you see two there. But that, the second one was an individual. We can't classify it as a suicide because it was not a suicide. There was an individual that was at a party with family and friends that was dancing around with a loaded gun and accidentally discharged it and killed himself unintentionally. So that's why that is a result, a death resulting from gunfire. I believe it was, well, I know it was deemed accidental. Uh, casings, shell casings, where we located casings, no witnesses, no victim. Property damage was number twenty-six. And that is, you know, sometimes we get calls and there's no witnesses to be found or what have you, but, or the caller said it happened at Fifth and Allen. Well, we get there, officers get out of the vehicle, they canvass the neighborhood. It may be Sixth and Allen, but they walk the streets. They start locating shell casings. They photograph them and collect them as evidence. And whatever we can find, we process, log into evidence and what have you. So you have numbers like that as well. By comparison, in January only, we had thirteen in two thousand twenty-two versus three, nine, five, and six in the respective years of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So there has been an uptick. It is starting to slow down a little bit. What we had to do was focus our attention on the known shooters. And I left the meeting last night and drove by one of the locations and I saw an officer parked down the street. And, and it's like, we focus our attention on you. If this is what you want, we're going to give you the attention that you so duly deserve if you want to go out and shoot up our city. So we've been doing that and it's relatively quiet over there, believe it or not. But that's what we have to do. It's challenging staffing-wise, but it's effective. Plus, we don't run the risk of, you know, alienating other citizens. Because if you go to an area and you start pulling over everybody, you know, ninety-five percent of those people are good people that did nothing wrong or maybe minor vehicle violations or what have you. But, you know, we focus so much attention on the negative folks that, you know, want to cause harm and disrupt everybody else's lives. And I think that will have an impact, but we've got to do more as a community to affect this and make change. The next slide shows the number of firearms that were either confiscated, recovered, found property or what have you, or officers seized them in some type of investigation. To the left, you have twenty-eighteen through two thousand twenty-one, the total number. It's been relatively consistent about the number of firearms that we seize and log into evidence. Got two thousand eighteen, we had two hundred and twenty-six. Two thousand nineteen, two hundred and seventeen. Two thousand twenty-one, two hundred and twenty-two. And two thousand, I'm sorry, I got two thousand twenty-one up there twice. So that's two thousand twenty is two hundred and twenty-two. And two thousand twenty-one, two hundred and twenty-four. So the right slide is for January only. To date, we've seized twenty-four weapons compared to, well, two thousand twenty was eighteen, two thousand twenty-one was twenty-four. So still, again, it's still pretty consistent, the number of guns that are out there in this community. And I'm a gun owner. It's sad because it's one thing for you all who have the right to purchase weapons that have common sense and respect human life to have a weapon. Great, all for it. But when you've got thirteen and fourteen-year-olds that have more access to guns than I do, and I work at a damn police department, you know? So, and that's the trouble. At the meeting last night, we had some breakout sessions and we were talking to some individuals that said, hey, you can take a gun from these kids and guess what? They'll show up the next day or an hour later with a brand-new Glock. So somebody is furnishing guns, and these guns, when we recover them, they are not stolen. So that means that somebody that was eligible to purchase a handgun is doing it and putting it in the hands of a juvenile. So, but we will do everything we can if we apprehend the folks that are doing this, to work with our federal partners and charge the people supplying kids with guns with federal offenses, which has mandatory minimum sentencing. Just to give you an idea of what officers are dealing with. The picture to your left was officer made a traffic stop. This individual was charged with drug trafficking back in November two thousand twenty-one. But if you see on the seat, that little baggie there has meth in it, and he had a loaded firearm. And, and officers are making traffic stops daily with people carrying guns and people that, you know, have no qualms about using them. So those are the challenges that we face day to day out there on the street. The picture to your right, this is the shooting that happened where a vehicle chased down an individual from the fifty-four Walmart. They chased this vehicle and started discharging weapons, firing at the vehicle multiple times. And you probably read it on the internet or what have you, or I know we did a press release. But they ditched their guns behind a building, that's the air conditioning unit, and officers located those. And there are three guns right there. Well, one adult male was charged and two juveniles were charged with possession of a handgun. So that's what we're dealing with. One of the juveniles was a female. Yes. There, there's no.
With the age on you, say juvenile then.
Say again?
The age of a juvenile then. Help me, what you classifying a juvenile? Is that under twenty-one or eighteen?
No, under eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Yes.
That even worse.
Yeah, anybody that hadn't reached the age of maturity, which is eighteen, and I would argue the age of maturity might be a little higher. But, oh, yeah. So next, we have Part Two Crimes, which are misdemeanors, vandalism, drug violations, nuisance-type offenses, drunkenness, simple assault, weapon law violations, disorderly conduct and such. Twenty twenty-one, I think it was for disorderly conduct, two hundred and sixty-three. I should have put a total down, Nate, but I failed to do so. But we are, I'm gonna go to the right slide for January. I think we are kind of on par with everything except for drug violations is dropping a little bit. And you all know that we're part of a HIDA. We have one officer committed and dedicated to the HIDA, the Owensboro Davis County HIDA with the FBI. We have one officer that's a task force officer assigned to the ATF that really helps us out with these gun cases. And we have two officers assigned to the DEA Task Force, which is a HIDA out of Evansville. So working with all these different entities, you know, trying to bring a halt to some of this violent crime in Owensboro, we are reaching out and doing everything we can to address this issue. You have any questions for me?
Commissioner Zappa?
First of all, Chief, I want, I want to thank you for all you guys do. And you had mentioned that we were at a thing last night and some of us were there. And it, it seems like to me that, I didn't realize people were putting guns in people, in these kids' hands. And is that primarily where this is coming from? It's minors that we've seen lately?
That we've seen lately, yes. It's, uh, young people that don't know how to manage conflict. Their, their decision to shoot, you know, rather than talk something out, they don't know how to engage in conflict resolution. So they resort to guns. You said something that made me mad, so I'm gonna get back at you. So I shoot at you, I miss, guess what? The person that got shot at goes and gets the gun and then I'm gonna find him and shoot back at him. So it's nonsense. And, but one day, you know, right now, we had one homicide in two thousand twenty-one. But if these kids actually learned how to shoot and had good aim or whatever, we could be stacking bodies like other communities, and we don't want that.
Well, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I, I don't know what's, with staffing and everything that you're doing, it's, it's, it's hard. But, you know, you, you guys cannot raise people's kids for them.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's called parenting. And there's a, I know someone mentioned there's some, some courses or something that you could take on parenting. And they acted like that seemed to help. And, and I would say, you know, we need to start looking back to the churches and we need to start getting back in the church and, and families. What I've noticed is when I go to my church, it's all old people and a couple of families there with little kids. I'm looking at myself. Well, I'm old people too, but it's just, it seems like, you know, from thirty years ago, things have changed. And I think it's just not here in Owensboro. It's, you know, all through Kentucky and the, in the country. Is we need to get back on, on a good foundation of, you know, right and wrong. And, and so anyway, but I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know that you're doing the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Helem, I just want to thank you for putting some heat on the residents. I know there's been one or two of them mainly causing most of the trouble in the neighborhood. And I've had several people approach me wondering why that hadn't been done. And I want to thank you for turning up some heat on them. Thank you. One of the things that I learned last night is, is interesting is you get called to basically handle family issues, young, young people. And that's probably not what you should be doing. What, what can the people do? You know, they're calling you because their child's out of hand.
They could contact Social Services, the CDW's office, anybody, but, you know, the police. And the example that I gave was last Friday, I was driving home around six and there was a call that came in. A lady called and said that her eight-year-old had just pushed her and was trying to run away from home. And I'm sorry, that is not a police issue because we show up, we, we represent force. No matter how we, we try to sell ourselves and promote ourselves, an eight-year-old is going to see us as an authority figure that's got a gun and a badge. Our job is not to scare the bejesus out of these little kids. It's like, the parent has to raise the child. And if they don't, if you rely on the police to do it, what does that mean for the next ten years when this child is going through, you know, puberty and his teen years? It's like, well, I don't have to listen to anybody. It's going to take the police to get me to do anything. I'm not doing my homework. I'm not doing X, Y, Z. It's just that until the police show up, and then you have that negative disdain for police officers. You know, it's like, hey, we just don't like them. You know, I hate the police because they see us as, you know, occupying force or oppressors or what have you, so.
Thank you.
Yes, questions I've got are, are a little different than the rest of the group. And that is domestic disturbances as well as, you know, traffic stops are probably the two most dangerous times for a law enforcement officer to deal with the public. We've had a lot of shootings nationwide, and I know we work really hard to train our officers, but we have so many new officers. Are there any special initiatives that we're working on through training to protect our officers in those two situations, domestics and traffic stops?
Yes, I mean, officers going through the academy, they get domestic violence training. We do a lot of training in-house as well. We have our own range. We have our own defensive tactics instructors. And we have scenario-based training that officers go through using what we used to call the FATs machine, but it's a firearm simulator, which we hope to purchase one over the next year to put at our, our range facility, our academy and what have you. So, and, and we also send officers to specialized training at different places. So we, we do everything we can to be one of the best-trained, if not the best-trained, police agencies in Kentucky.
Well, I think you do a good job. I just, I don't want to lose a single officer to those situations. And having been out with them, I know domestic disturbances are a landmine. The only other question I have is Philadelphia, the city of Philadelphia banned traffic stops for minor violations. Things like your license tag was expired or you had a air freshener hanging from your mirror. Is that something the state of Kentucky ought to look at? I mean, would that reduce the potential threat to officers? Because when you, you've got the two issues you talked about. One is you've got kind of the, the heavy-footed notion that we're just pulling people over to pull, pull them over, rightly or wrongly. And then second of all, is that a good idea in terms of reducing crime?
Well, actually, there were some studies done years ago and, you know, minor traffic violations and traffic stops can result in apprehending wanted felons, fugitives from other states and what have you, or somebody that had committed a crime. And I'll use the example, we had a juvenile runaway. Had the person that picked her up violated the law or something and an officer stopped them for expired tags, there's a chance that we wouldn't have to wait, you know, two or three weeks to find this girl. You know, we might have been able to do it then. So it's, it's a mixed bag, you know? When officers use that, you have to be careful. And that's why, you know, going with city ordinances that can be created like curfews and stuff, if, if it's applied equitably and fairly all throughout the county, then that's one thing. But you, you can't create ordinances for officers to come in because I won't always be the police chief. And you might get somebody that thinks that, hey, I, I need to be more aggressive. We need to be more assertive or what have you. We got this ordinance. Go down there and stop those people. You know what I'm saying? So we don't want to ever be in that situation. We do our best not to. And I'm proud to say that the men and women of the Owensboro Police Department, they, they, they look at those things and they're constantly thinking about how it looks, how they may be perceived or whatever. Because we want to be viewed as being fair and consistent and just for all.
And I think you're doing an excellent job in that area, and so is Officer Winkler. Officer Winkler is out there constantly communicating with the community, and I commend you all for great work.
No, thank you.
Chief, good presentation. You know, it seemed like when I was here a long time ago, that a lot of juveniles were sent to Bowling Green.
Yes.
Is, did that help hurt or was a no, a wash?
Well, there were some, many, many discussions.
Yeah, just curious about that.
Davis County, we had the reputation for sending as many, if not more juveniles to Bowling Green than Louisville and Lexington. We were right up there with them and we had, you know, a fraction of their population. So things were done to address that because, you know, it was an equity issue as well. But that pendulum has shifted so far and it's gotten out of control because now there's no accountability. There's no consequences. So juveniles are being picked up and basically given a pass. So you pick them up four times and it's like, hey, nothing's going to happen. What's going to stop them from doing something else in number five? Nothing. So those are, we, we have to get back to that. I'm not saying everybody needs to be locked up or go to Bowling Green. But when you've got recidivist offenders that continue to do the same thing, especially when it comes to guns and violent crime, they need to be put away somewhere for a length of time and maybe get some type of rehabilitation, some education or what have you. So those are, like I said, some of the challenges that we deal with in trying to address this.
So is that something that has to be legislated to where you can start that process such as that to try and get some of the juveniles some attention?
Yes.
And it would be legislative in Frankfurt? And it would be legislative in Frankfurt or locally? Frankfurt?
Frankfurt. I think somebody would have to propose a bill. Michael Johnson, the evangelist that's running for office, mentioned last night that Senate Bill 200. And I'm not sure on which bill it was, when it was. But, you know, if that's the case, you know, it took legislators to make that change and it'd be legislators that'll have to revert that back. But agencies across the state are experiencing the same thing. You know, a Lexington officer was shot earlier this week by a juvenile. You know, he survived, but it was four juveniles walking. He stopped them and one of them shot him. So very, very dangerous times to be a police officer.
Yeah, I don't have the courage. And our age, average age of our police officers, 30? In that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that in itself is frightening, you know, that with all the changes in the retirements and all those things like that. But I don't see how you can do that job. What, you been 30 years or something?
Yes.
I don't see how you can put up with that pressure and the pressure on the spouse and the wife, the divorce rate. You know, it's a remarkable calling that anybody has to be a police officer. God bless you and all the folks that you take care of every day, and we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Transient boat dock update. Leland Hancock, Assistant City Manager. Don't let Mark help you because he will drop something and break it. So just to go ahead and run your ship without him.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Sometimes you gotta play to your strengths, and Mark's a great attorney. We just don't want him in the mood.
He can't walk and chew gum, so we found that out.
Here today to give you a brief update on where we stand on the transient boat dock design. As many of you know, we've had a long history with the river and connection with the river from the original wharf located in the heart of our downtown to the heydays of the 70s here, where, get some great grainy photos of a very busy boat dock that was in our downtown in Smothers Park in the 70s and 80s. We move on to the 90s and 2000s, all the good times and stories that have been had behind the Executive Inn and a lot of activity you can see as well. Usage of the boat dock behind the Big E. When I was a senior in high school, we actually got to ride on the Executive Queen. That was one of the heydays. Not me, no. We threw some chairs in the water and nobody else got to do it. We didn't, but our group did. We move on to Paducah today. And this is a perfect example of what our boat dock could look like or will look like with its design, including the glow of the Holiday Inn in the background. We've got a similar design in our boat dock to what Paducah has. It's a 500-foot-long dock, about 20 foot in width. You can see Paducah as well has a full boat dock there. And they get about 500 to 600 visits a year overnight stays, plus individuals coming in, picking up fuel. They get thousands and thousands of visits on top of that. To give you a little history of the Ohio River, there are about 62 marinas between Cincinnati and Paducah. Boaters utilize the river heavily, from large boats to pleasure craft. Louisville alone has about 1,355 slips, although they're about 167 miles east of Owensboro. A lot of those boats travel that to Paducah to visit, to Evansville, to various places. Some even going down to make the Great Loop, and I'll explain that later. Candleton and Evansville are our two closest, Candleton being 40 miles upriver, Evansville almost 40 miles downriver, which leaves about an 80-mile stretch of river for individuals traveling with no place to stop. And that's one of the benefits that our dock would provide. As you can see, we have about 4,300 registered boats in Owensboro and Davis County, 55 documented vessels. Documented vessels, your larger vessels, 26 feet and larger, typically are making a transient traffic. You can see the top right picture is more of a recreational boat. Pleasure craft, where the bottom left would be a more of a transient boat, one that would dock overnight and be traveling up and down the river, making the Great Loop, those types of things. But you can see even from the pontoon boat, the visits that are there, the family interest there and how boats are utilized in various different ways. Evansville provided about 2,600 registered boats, although I would argue with that. I would say they're more like three times the number of boats that we have based on population. We had multiple contacts there, but that was the best numbers I could get. Louisville alone had 1,424 documented vessels. Documented being the ones that our big grant applies to for people that are doing transient traffic. Just those numbers alone are over 8,000. I would estimate between Evansville, Louisville and Owensboro, you've got 15,000 to 20,000 boats that would travel that river or utilize that area. As I said, our dock will be 500 feet long, or Paducah is about 370 feet. You can see the switchback going back and forth just to the west of the pier that will provide ADA access. You'll also see some orange dots that are a debris boom that would be upriver, helping keep some of that debris. Anything would be floating down the river, we direct it away from our boat dock itself. And then with Friday after five shift into this area, you're gonna see a larger area where you can literally walk right up and be in the heart of that event on a Friday night. And if you're ever down there and you look over the handrails, you'll see there's anywhere from 40 to 100 boats, depending on the night and weather conditions and what's going on, and particularly the band. We move on to the benefits of the dock. You'll see that having that access to the river is going to provide access for families and individuals to all that downtown has to offer, regardless of what's going on from Friday after five to any event that we may have during those boating months. The boat dock was part of our master plan. You will see overnight stays by transient boaters. Paducah had 533 in 2020 alone, plus thousands of visits for individuals just getting fuel in our waste facilities and docking for the day. The dock will promote recreational boating on the Ohio River, providing access to a destination that you just can't get on a lake. From the Thirsty Turtle at Kentucky Lake to Nick's Boat Dock at Rough River, individuals get off of their boats and they do utilize the services there, either providing fuel or getting food, those types of things. And when you have those types of amenities to offer, people will utilize them there. Kentucky Lake's a perfect example, just a bigger lake, there are more boats there of all the different amenities and the ways people utilize those different facilities, Louisville being the same situation. The fuel and dockage revenue is something that I think will and could offset the city operational costs and expenses on the dock itself. We did apply for a big grant. That's a boating infrastructure grant. That will be a $1.5 million amount that we have applied for. We're literally waiting any day to get notification whether or not we have received this grant. The official announcement will not come until April. And we also have a Clean Vessel Act for the sewage and wastewater facilities that will be attached to this dock. Cincinnati alone received over a half million dollars for a similar project that we're proposing. Now for costs. Transient dock construction itself is about $6.5 million. If we receive the $1.5 million from the big grant, which we feel pretty confident about at this point, you're looking at a $5 million cost for this dock facility. You'll see in the picture on the left that, my right, your left, or my left, your right, sorry. That is basically a similar design of the switchbacks and the access to the water. We had taken a tour to Paducah previously, and a few of you have seen their access to that water and how you can utilize that with ADA access or anyone else looking to get to the water. As for our schedule, we currently are in the middle of the completion of the construction documents. Those should be finished by the end of February. As I said, the big application, the official announcement will come out in April, although we should have some indication from the federal government any day at this point is what we're expecting. And construction on that, once we start, would be about a 12-month period for that construction schedule. And we can't do anything until after that announcement. No bidding or anything of those processes until we find out about the big grant, if that's something that is decided to move forward with. I tried to keep it brief and sweet. If you have any questions, we're happy to entertain those at this time.
I was curious, the one in Paducah, did you check to see what kind of revenue they brought in last year overall for fuel and food?
I do have those numbers. I don't have them in front of me, but I can provide those to you.
Okay, thank you.
You would assume though, closer to Kentucky Lake, there were, since we're in this 80-mile gap where there's nothing, that it should be better, there should be more going on there than there is in Owensboro, I would assume.
I guess you could assume that, based on the size of the lake, you're going to have more boats there.
You got Kentucky Lake, Lake Barclay and you got I-24.
But you have individuals here that go to, you know, Rough River and Dale Hollow. They travel into Indiana and go to lakes there, a lot of those individuals. And there's a ton of activity that's on this river alone, fuel being one of the biggest draws from individuals when they're out. And it's not just individual boats when I provide those numbers. Boating is usually not a solo activity. Typically, there are two, if not as many as a boat will hold, anywhere from 10 to 14 people, depending on the size of the boat. So you're talking thousands and thousands of people out on that water in a boating season. Anytime you go, if you head to Kentucky Lake, go to any of the bays at Rough River, you'll see 300 or 400 boats with absolutely as many people as they will hold on there.
As a boater, you can state that for a fact, right?
Yes, I've seen it myself.
As far as fuel, Leland, what's the closest place we can get fuel now if you're on the river from here?
Candleton and Evansville are two of your closest places to receive fuel.
So, so we would be, so we're right, right in the middle of those two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I remember when this came in front of us, oh.
100 years ago?
Yeah.
About 2014?
2014-ish. And the difference that I can see in today and then is today, we're in much better financial standing than we were. And I think I was the one that I was pretty much against it at that time. But I visited Paducah with several people here, and I think it would be a good amenity to add to the riverfront. I think having a riverfront with not great ways to use boats is kind of a piece that's missing. So I'm kind of inclined to be for this, especially if we get the grant. Number two is, you know, what makes a community good is we have so many different amenities in Owensboro. We have skate parks, tennis, we have mountain biking things, museums, River Park, Bluegrass Museum, golf. And not everybody does all that, you know? 10% of the population does each several, each thing. But that's kind of what makes Owensboro unique and cool, is that we have a lot of stuff and a lot of things for a lot of different people. And I think it's a piece that would really benefit downtown. And, you know, big rivers, they decided to come here. And I was talking to one of the board members from the second story of the Bluegrass Museum, and he just looked out there and I asked him if this had anything to do with it, and he said, yes. So it's the investments of the past that I think have really garnered our success in this community. Is, you know, we decided to invest in the community and now people are investing private dollars in us. And I think this might be another thing, along with the Northwest revitalization, which is right there too, that could really take it, this area down here to the next level. So thanks, thank you for your hard work and we'll see what happens.
Leland? Thank you, sir.
Now, as far as the cost? Thank you.
The cost of the dock has a lot to do with, it has to be in there year-round. And it has to be built rugged enough to stay in and adjust all the water levels. You know, we've, there's been millions of dollars invested in our riverfront, and that's resulted in over $200 million of private investment. We still don't have access to our downtown hotels, River Park, convention center, our shops, restaurants from the water. And this would give an opportunity for us to have that and bring back Owensboro as a boating destination that it was for years. People's gonna travel from, well, I know that, you know, from Cincinnati and Paducah up to our area, and there'll be a lot of traffic from Evansville just gonna come and stay all night. So I think now that the project is getting close to being designed, that we ought to consider taking a good look and going ahead and completing the project. And thanks for all the input that you've given us.
You're very welcome.
Thanks.
Yes, one question I've got, and I probably should have asked it before. So who would administer this? Is it gonna be the Parks Department, Public Works? What department would be?
The way Paducah handles this, you've got a program called DACAqua. And basically, you've got an app on your phone, there's not anybody standing there attending the dock all day. They get a notification, they arrive at the time that the individual states that they will be there. They help them make sure they get tied up, get all of the issues that they need addressed, and then they depart from there. So in my mind, with the staff that we have downtown in the park, we would use Parks staff to leave the concession stand or be in that area and arrive down there. They may not come from Smothers necessarily, but they could arrive from any other location.
So Parks would administer if there was any person. The other question I've got is, you know, we, the river is not a forgiving entity, and you can have the river rise and all of that and flooding. How do we, in designing this, how do you address that? I mean, I assume the group that we're using as consultants have the magic answers, but is that something we should be concerned about? Are we gonna have to replace this after 10 years? How long would it last?
That's something that we were very conscious of. We learned a lot from English Park. I hate to, this'll sound bad when I say it, but that dock itself was designed for a lake. So it takes a lot of abuse and gets damaged quite frequently. This dock is designed similar to the one in Paducah, which is much more robust and made for this type of environment, being on a river with the fluctuations. Although our dock at English can handle the fluctuations, in the river rise, it does not handle any debris or larger boats that may, you know, hit it or dock there and tearing off the lugs, those types of things that we've repaired numerous times over the years. This one will not have that issue based off what we've learned from Paducah and other designs as well. So it would be much more robust.
Okay, and the last question I have is, we used to have a corporate challenge, and one of those was a boat race, an outrigger boat race. I competed in it not well, but I competed in it one year. It was fun, had a great time, it was down by English Park. Could we have those kinds of events? Would this dock spawn that would give us an opportunity to have those kinds of events? Or would we keep that down at English Park?
Now, that would be a tough one to call. I'd have to talk to Tim and Amanda, that was the dragon boat racing, I believe. Know that part of, yeah, that's what I was thinking, dragon boats, yeah. We'd have to utilize whichever would be the best and the safest way to get in the water. Either one could probably be used, to be honest with you, but we would evaluate that.
Okay, well, thank you all for your hard work on this, Leland. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
How much did Paducah pay for their dock? Do you know?
They are right in that $5 million range as well, I think five and a half. I can get you those numbers exactly, I've got all of that.
Now, my understanding is they had to build basically a berm to help deflect the water, and they've got a kind of a whirlpool effect and it's filling in the backside of their dock. How are we gonna be sure that doesn't happen to us and we don't have to do any dredging?
Yeah, that was one of the first things the city engineer in Paducah pointed out, where the air is there and some of the issues. The dock is actually not where the original proposed location was due to some red-eared mussels, I believe, and about four other kinds that they had to shift down river. And then they built that, basically a breakwater to occur for that, which then causes silt to build up behind that. Had they not done those issues, they wouldn't have the silting issue that they have today. We are not in that situation here with our pier and in that same area. So we don't have those similar conditions that are being created. They also fired their first group of designers based on that and switched to the same group that we're using as well. So we get to benefit from some of their mistakes.
Thank you, Leland. City project list, City Manager Nate Pagan.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The list was in your packet as every month, and we're happy to address any questions or concerns or comments you might have.
Tax increment financing on 54. We've got a lot of new businesses opening up in that, in the commons out there, a bank and a number of things. So I assume we're moving in a really positive direction with our TIF on 54. Is that accurate, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, there seems to be new businesses developing and moving out there often, so that's obviously good for us and RWR and the developer. I know typically we would do in February, March, a specific TIF update. So we may come back in a month or two at a work session to give you a more specific update. But it is good to see as our local economy continues to grow and develop that many of the investments that are occurring in the community are occurring in the TIF areas.
I'm excited. It looks good. It looks, every time I drive through, there's something new. Oh, I'm heartened.
Oh, I'm, I'm heartened.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, anything else?